Would you all please join us? To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call this meeting orders. Those present are their own. We will resume minutes from the regular session Lincoln County Commission meeting held on December.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That be unanimous. Most carries. Next is the appointment of the President of Lincoln County Commission for 2015.
I make the motion to appoint President Matthews for another year.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sure carries.
Congratulations, Mr. President.
Alright, let's set the dates for the time of Lincoln County Commission meetings for this year. Is the first and third Thursday good?
Yes.
Yes, that would be fine. Just get the same times.
Alright, six o'clock in the evening?
I made it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That be unanimous. Most carries. First and third Thursday, six o'clock. Alright, now we need to set the holiday schedule for Lincoln County House. Do you all see, set a good date?
And that's just a calendar set by the state.
Yeah, basically. That's what we've done in the past. So, probably not like this up.
Excellent work.
I make the motion to accept the calendar for the holidays for next year.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That be unanimous. Most carries. Next, we're public comment, and Rick McThau is here with the Green Waste Water Farm Land Protection.
Just want to give you a quick update on the Green Waste Water Project. This is phase five. Five phases, which we're expecting is gonna end in March. And the way these last four phases have worked is that we have a budget that's approved by the state DEP. We spend money, and then we ask for reimbursement from the state. What you've got here is the most recent reimbursement request that were made, which was back in November. And I think probably important stuff is what we've got left. We've got just over eighty thousand dollars left in the project, and of that thirty-three thousand is for installation of systems. Most of it's taken care of, and I'll bring you some more information as we go through. When we get this done, we'll have a hundred and seventeen homes in the left four that have received.
Through all the phases.
Through all the phases, yeah, from two thousand and five until two thousand and fifteen.
The eighty thousand is what's left.
Eighty thousand, so what's left this phase on the left-hand side, what the line items were for the phase. So, the phase was six hundred and fifty-seven, almost six hundred and fifty-six.
So, do we pay the eighty, and then it's reimbursed by, is that what you said, or?
Pretty much everything is reimbursed back to the county. But we try, we try to juggle it so that the county's not out any money. As long as we have an invoice, the DEP will accept the invoice. So, sometimes we wait to pay until the money comes back, if they're not streaming.
Now, so this phase will be over in March. Do you think there will come any more? Do you think this is gonna be something that's continued, or is it?
The state says this is.
This is the highest phase.
That's what they're saying, as of the last time we had it.
You know, we had talked before about having some money in there, but we still have money to set up as one of the maintenance.
Yes, we have a maintenance association. They've got, you know, it's a whole separate kind of thing. They've got.
Do we know how many homes are totally up in that area? You said we could serve a hundred and seventeen?
Serve a hundred and seventeen. It's, it's a moving target because that area, people are moving in and moving out all the time. My guess is there are probably two hundred and some homes.
So, we got somewhere between a hundred and fifty percent of the home. Are we doing any water sampling?
Yes, we're still doing water sampling. In fact, if you look at the line item testing, we've got some over the same time left, so we will continue doing a batch of that. Okay, the other thing I wanted to give you a quick update on was the Lincoln County Farm Land Protection Board. The commission set up the Farm Land Protection Board in two thousand and six. What it does is it matches federal dollars through USDA, and it allows the county to purchase easements on farm property. And that's farm property in the biggest sense. It could be an actual working farm, or it could be a farm that's no longer working, but it has fields and timber that we count as a farm. And the easements, the easements are perpetual easements, so that means that once there is an easement, that property cannot be used for new things except for farms. So, it couldn't be turned into a housing development, or a Walmart, or anything like that. The idea is that, you know, we certainly want economic development, but we also want to preserve some of the personal farmland in the county. So, what you've got there is this current, this past calendar year, just a spreadsheet that shows what our expenses were and what our income is. The way the income works, for the most part, the income that we get is from the county commission. And the county commission funds it through its transfer taxes on real estate that is sold in the county. A portion of what's brought in for that tax goes to the Farm Land Protection Board. And right now, we're at the point where we're moving toward the county's first easement. And the issue is that we've got some disagreement between the person that was hired to assess the value of the property and what we think the value of the property is. And there are not a whole lot of people in the state who do that, so we ended up with somebody from Buchanan, and it's all that that company wasn't doing a very good job matching the property we were looking at with other similar properties. So, hopefully, within a couple meetings, they'll come to you and ask the commission, who is ultimately responsible for this, to go ahead and let us know.
So, you said this is the first one you've done?
The first, we're about to do one, yes. We have, there have not been any others since. One of the issues we had was originally the state said you had to own the minerals and the property. Couldn't be severed. You know, Lincoln County, about ninety percent of our property is severed, so we had to go through a lengthy process at the federal level and the state level to convince them that, you know, we couldn't just do it that way. So, we've had a number of different things. Most of these Farm Land Protection Boards are in the eastern part of the state, where there's a different set of hurdles that they have to face than what we have to face. So, we'll bring you more information about that, and if you want to take a look at the financials, and if you have questions, I'll be going into them as we.
Next, we have the Lincoln County High School baseball team.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for, thank you for the county commission and its members for hearing our organization tonight. I'm the head baseball coach at Lincoln County High School. My name's Greg Lambert. This is John Byrd and Paul Roach. They're two of my assistant coaches. And I was hired as the baseball coach six years ago, and when I was hired, we started a upgrade, a series of upgrades on our facilities. And over the past six years, many organizations and individuals have reached out and helped us, including the county commission. And we're here tonight to show you what we've been doing with the assistance, and also request some assistance in our next phase of our upgrades. Coach? And Lincoln County High School was consolidated in the fall of two thousand and six, and there was very little to no funding available for the extracurricular facilities. Teams at the high school were left to fend for themselves and utilize the facilities from the old high schools. Our baseball, our first baseball coaches and parents got together and raised money and equipment, and were able to scratch out a place to play baseball on campus. And, and when I was hired, I guess it was in two thousand and nine, we had a very nice field playing surface, but we had just a fence around the field, two dugouts. And we played in the triple-A level, and our competition was second to none. We were faced to play the biggest, baddest, best teams around with, you know, limited resources. Needless to say, we suffered a lot of growing pains and a lot of failure over the years, but we've scratched and clawed, and we've, we've done a lot of things to try to improve our program. And in two thousand, from two thousand and seven to two thousand and twelve, our average number of players on our team were eleven to fifteen players. And the reason for that was is we couldn't get kids to come out and play because we couldn't give, give them enough opportunities to play. We didn't have lights, so, you know, if we had fifteen or twenty kids, we could only play varsity ball games because at home, we only had time to play games. You know, we had to start games at five o'clock, and we had to get our games in before dark. And when we were on the road, we were playing teams so far away, like Parkersburg, and Greenbrier East or West, and Ripley, you know, Beckley, places like that. And, you know, we just, you just couldn't go play two games on a road like that and get your kids home at three in the morning on a school night. So, needless to say, by spring break, it was inevitable. We would always, our numbers would always dwindle down to about ten or eleven players. Soon as spring break hit, we'd lose four or five kids every year, it seemed like. And we weren't able to build. We were perpetually young. We never could get a veteran team to go out and compete. Coach? This is a photograph from Google Earth of our facilities. This was the, the summer after I took over. You can see, we had no concession stand. We had, this right here was portable bleachers. This was portable bleachers that was brought in by the Lions Club, and we just started digging the footer of our concession stand. Now, this was a picture taken this summer. This is what we've got right now, our concession stand and press box. And you can see over on the left and the right, you can see the chairback bleachers that we've installed. And this is the upstairs right now of our press box. It is still not finished. We want to provide a umpire dressing area right here, and this would be a office slash press box where they could keep score and do the announcing. And these are restrooms, and the reason for that is umpires, and it's a safety reason more so than anything. Our umpires come to games now, and they have to dress in the parking lot. And I just don't think that's a safe place for them, or a safe environment, because we can't guarantee their safety, and we can't guarantee what parents are gonna do if they're not very happy with them.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I've seen it. This is my twenty-sixth year of coaching, of coaching, and my sixteenth year of coaching high school baseball, and I have seen incidences in the parking lot. So, what we want to do is provide a safe environment for our umpires where they can come and get dressed, and then after a game, they can go there and get dressed while the crowd leaves, and they can take a shower, change clothes, and they're at their comfort and safety of the dressing area. And this is the downstairs right now, and all this stuff that you see here has been donated or scavenged by us. And we've still got a lot to do, and you can see, we do have central heat and air already installed. Coach? The first thing that we did when I was hired is we raised the outfield wall. Two hundred-foot section of our outfield wall, we raised it from ten feet to eighteen feet. And then we purchased a windscreen that goes clear around the outfield wall. It really makes the field look nice, and it helps out with home runs. Believe me, we were on the short end of too many of those. Another thing we have now is bathrooms at our concession stand. These, this is, this is one of the first pictures we took as we were constructing everything and running the water lines. It looks a lot, a lot more finished now. And this is the volunteers running pipe and connecting our sewer line. Also, another thing that we did was we were able to purchase two hundred and two chairback bleacher seats. And we bought those as they were taking them out of the Baltimore Orioles stadium, Camden Yards. I was able to work out a deal where I could purchase those seats for twelve dollars apiece. And if you get on Archer Stadium seating, if you want to get on the internet today and look at the price of those seats, the thing about these seats, they're, they actually have historical significance. Those seats were in the stadium when Lou Gehry broke, or Cal Ripken broke Lou Gehry consecutive games played streak. And they came with a certificate of authenticity that we're actually gonna make into bronze plates and place on our, our bleachers. If you go to Archer Stadium seating and look, look at the price of these ble, these seats right now, they sell for six hundred and twenty-five dollars per seat. Six twenty-five. We got them for twelve dollars a seat. And also, that's another picture of us putting the seats together. This is a photograph of our indoor practice area, and that's another thing that we're very proud of, that we believe has really raised the level of our abilities at Lincoln County High School. We purchased turf from a company in Georgia, got a really, really good deal on it. This was an old storage area in the central office. We got all, everything moved out there, painted it, laid turf. We even, over on this side, we have dressing areas for our kids to dress and store their equipment. And what you can't see is we have two big, nice batting cages that, you can see the wires that run across here. We slide those batting cages out, so we have two very nice, regulation-sized, actually seventy-foot-long batting cages, as well as a five thousand dollar pitching machine that itself feeds, so that coaches can actually instruct players instead of standing behind the machine. Okay, coach? Now, this is a picture of the construction of our, our bleachers. You can see, we have two parents right there, actually three parents, and the rest of these guys are players that have come out. These kids, they, you know, they put the time in themselves. They've spent a lot of time down there on the field. And I know anybody that's been involved with baseball knows that baseball players have to spend a lot of time working on ball fields. And you can see these guys, it means enough to these guys to come out on their off days and work. This is a neck, another photo, next up, you know, you can see a just step-by-step progression of what we're doing. Okay, coach? Then we've laid the tin across, getting ready for the concrete. And then I think the next photo is our finished product. You can see that is just out. We're very extremely proud of that. We feel like, and that was all volunteer work. And we feel like that nobody anywhere could have done any better. Our parents were professionals. We have professional block leaders. Those rails, if you went, if you went and looked up close, that's probably several thousand dollars worth of railing there. And that was all donated materials. And also, by the way, we've got ninety-eight seats over here, chairback seats. We have ninety-eight on the other side, and then I think we have sixteen right in here. Two hundred and two total. Now, one more thing before we go. All this concrete, that wasn't free. I mean, you know, that, that was all concreted. Before, nothing, you know, when I was, when I took the job, we, in two thousand and six or nine, we had nothing here. This was all low area. You could barely see above the wall there unless you walked right up to it. Okay, coach? Another thing that we purchased, and with the, this was one that the county commission specifically, they purchased this scoreboard for us. You can't see the scoreboard real well, but you can see, we got Armstrong trucks that volunteered to come in and help us hang that scoreboard. And we're very proud of it. It's one of the nicest scoreboards around, and as a matter of fact, we've had several schools in the, in the commu, in the, in our region has contacted us over the past school year, wanting information because of how nice it really is. I think the next photo, this is, this is kinda, it really doesn't, you can't appreciate how big this thing is. It's actually thirty feet wide. It's thirty feet wide and fifteen feet tall. And when you cross the bridge there at the store, at the school, you can see the big wall that says Lincoln County, and you can see prominently the scoreboard there. And one of the nicest things about it that kinda sets us apart from everybody else is this pitch speed indicator. We're one of the only schools in the state that has that, and it, we have a radar gun that clocks pitchers, and each time a pitcher pitches, it displays his speed up on the scoreboard for everybody to see. We were able to, these are, these are different companies that have donated to us, that we put advertising on the bottom of the scoreboard. There's the Lincoln Parks and Recreation, Armstrong, and State Farm, and this is Precision Coating. This company and a machine shop in Salt Rock has been just unbelievably outstanding to us. They provided the, the three thirty-foot, eight-inch high beams to, and I know that's, I don't, I didn't do the figuring, but I know it's in the thousands of dollars. Okay, coach? Another thing that we did is we purchased brick, brick dust for the reconstruction of base paths. You can see the, how they, how they look right there. We have, we've had a lot of trouble with our grass being diseased. A lot of, a lot of that was from the water that was running down the hill, running out onto the ball field. We just couldn't keep the, keep the grass healthy. And you can see a later photo of some of the finished product there. This is a overhead view of our baseball facility, and you can see one of the reasons why we had to make that giant wall in left field. You can see how the proportions are off. Right field is pretty much regulation because of the limits that they had when they were constructing the field. They had to make it shorter here, so we've raised the wall there, and we have our own black monster, like Boston has the green monster. We like to have, we like to, we were trying to make our field a more nostalgic-type field, nothing modern. We wanted to look old-school. Oh, go back, coach. One more thing I wanted to show you here is these, the, the next thing we did was, as you can see, these foul lines here, they're not straight. Trying to keep my pointer straight. And they have a dog leg in them, and that was something that we wanted to rectify also. So, this past summer, we took those, well, before we did that, the past two or three years, we've been asking and bringing in dirt to build this area up over here so that we could eventually move our fences back. And this summer, we were able to do that. We took the fences out, and you can see where the dog leg came around here because that was all, had to be taken out, dressed up. That was the dog leg. We took the fence down, moved it back, straightened everything out, and re-sowed everything. That's the left field line, and this is the right field line. You can see where the dog leg of the fence used to be. Now, we've moved it back. And you can see some work we've been doing on the dugouts here. This was stuff that was donated by the Parks and Recreation. They donated the funds for us to build a, an equipment storage room right here in this area. We're, we have that, that's, that stuff's all paid for, but we kinda ran out of time, and we will do, we will continue to work on this and finish this in the spring. And we also poured concrete right here in anticipation of putting turf in this area, astroturf, field turf. Okay, coach? And this is the other side of the home dugout where we poured a pad. We want to try to put some disconnect between our parents and our players. This area right here, we're gonna put a fence around this area, and this is gonna be a warm-up preparation area for our players and where we can store equipment, too. It's hard to see this without the lights off, but this is the area behind the fence. Would it be possible to flip this off for a second? This is the area behind the left field fence. We went in there this summer also and took all this area, took this dirt out and created drainage so that we could keep this water from running down the mountain onto our field and diseasing our grass. So, we, and also, we did this in anticipation of our next upgrade. And you can see another area right there. I think some people in here have seen what it used to look like, and that's the area now behind the outfield wall. Future projects for Lincoln County High School baseball is lights. Go ahead, coach. Turn that. Why does Lincoln County High School need lights? Well, to keep more students involved in baseball. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go on and, and before I even get to that is, is one of the things we want to be able to do is, and have always wanted to be able to do, was give our children and our players and our students equal chance to compete. And in tournament time, our players always have to go on the road and play. We've never, ever played a home tournament game in baseball since that school was created. And in order to do that, they have certain criteria. One of them is you have to have concession stands. You must have bathrooms. You must have a P.A. system. You must have a scoreboard. And we were under pressure, you were supposed to have lights, but I found out last year that we could probably get by that. But we have, we've, we've knocked everything, we've knocked everything out but the lights. Now, this year, we're gonna be able to host our first-ever sectional tournament game at Lincoln County High School. We still don't have a P.A. system. We're working to do that. We think we got some avenues to get some money for that. And I think we'll have a P.A. system. We will have a P.A. system by that time, I'll promise you. One of the reasons we need lights is to keep more students involved with baseball. We've outgrown our field's abilities with the number of participating athletes. We, we, since October the twenty-seventh, we've been conditioning prospective players, and we've had anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five kids show up every night. Anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five, every night, and in the past, we were lucky to get two or three. So, I think very much that our facilities have made a big difference in getting children to participate. In the past, dropout rate has increased due to not playing enough daylight hours or not, due to not enough daylight hours to schedule games and practice time. And that's what I meant when I talked about the JV. You know, when I, when, when you, when you have twenty, twenty-five kids, you've gotta be able to give those young kids that aren't varsity players yet the opportunity to play and develop. And if they're not getting that, they're not gonna come out, they're not gonna stay. So, again, we can't, we're, we have, we've been handcuffed in our ability to build a winning program with veteran players. And also, to keep feeder programs involved for successful varsity players. You know, when our school was consolidated, when our school was consolidated, I can't remember. It was a year or two after the consolidation. And West Virginia's High School Football Player of the Year, the High School Male Basketball Player of the Year, the West Virginia High School Baseball Player of the Year, and the West Virginia High School Softball Player of the Year. All the same year were Lincoln County students that went to other schools. We need to have facilities that will get the kids out that we have already and keep the kids that we're losing. It's important for us to do that. There's no reason why Scott should have a Kennedy Award winner. It should be a Lincoln County kid. There's no reason why Logan had the High School Baseball Player of the Year, or Basketball Player of the Year, or Nitro had the High School Baseball Player of the Year, or. or Nitro had the High School Baseball Player of the Year, or Chapperville had the High School Girls Player of the Year. Those were all Lincoln County students, born and bred here, that went someplace else because whatever reason. But I know that one of the reasons is because of our lack of facilities, and it goes even further than baseball. But I'm the baseball coach, and my job is to build the baseball program. And adequate is not what we're about. There's no reason why we need to be adequate. We, our goal is to be the best. And, uh, the things that we're doing is with the, with the long-term ambition to be the top program in the state and have the top facilities in the state. West Virginia Tech, uh, has already agreed to come to Lincoln County this spring and play a regular season game at our field if they can work out the logistics with their opponent. I think they're going to try to get Pikeville College to come down here and play a game on a Saturday. Now, there's another thing. You know, we really have two or three dates, two or three dates that, uh, that are, that would be possibilities for Tech, but only because we don't have lights. If we had lights, we could have any number of possibilities. We could have two or three or four college games a year there. And the reason that Tech's wanting to come here and play is because they have one with Lincoln County High School's players playing for them. He's a captain and a senior, and they want to bring him here where the Lincoln County people can see him play. We have two students now already that before we even started our first, we've, we've got sixty days before we even start our practice, and we've had two students already that signed full rides. So things are getting better for us, and we just want to get, to, to get to the next level. To keep students involved in baseball, sixty percent of high, now, this is also a study by the NCAA, and I'm going to be quick. Study by the NCAA, sixty percent of all high school students play sports. Boys more likely than girls, and I don't know why that is other than maybe there are more teams and more opportunities. According to the NCAA, the average GPA for an athlete is a full-grade point higher than non-athletes. And also, that the, it, people or students that participate in athletics had a graduation rate forty-one percent higher, a college graduation rate of forty-one percent higher than students that do, did not participate in athletics. And also, non-athletes or not, athletes were ninety-two percent less likely to do drugs, which leads to crime. Coach? Now, the cost for the lights, we've been researching that all year. We've got different competitive bids from multiple companies, and the most effective bid is the bid from Musco, and I'll let you, you guys can keep that. And their bid is at ninety-five thousand dollars. And, um, that pretty much is a turnkey job. Am I correct, Coach Bird?
Yes.
That's a turnkey job. That's, uh, them coming in, putting everything in. Go ahead and flip to the next one. The reason why it is so much, I don't know if, uh, I don't, I'm not exactly sure what the girl softball, uh, field cost when they put lights there, but our field is bigger, and it takes a six-pole system, a forty-four light fixture, and the poles are twice as tall as a typical softball field and twice as bright. And that's, and, and really why we're here is to see if the county commission could be generous enough to assist us in, um, trying to make this next phase a reality.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I've been sitting here thinking, and this may be a long shot.
Go right ahead.
But, um, when this new school was built, you know, it was funded by the SVA. At that time, they would not pay for any sports facilities at all. So now I've, I've learned that the new projects that they're doing, they are helping them with sports facilities. I just wonder if someone from the board could go to the SVA, I think it's coming up next month or February when you make your presentations for the year, and see if they would come back and assist a little bit with this. I mean, it was wrong, the way they did us. I was on the board then, and it was so frustrating because they just would not help at all. And, you know, we had the school, but then nothing else.
Right.
And, you know, I think everything that you said is completely true. I have a little boy that's in middle school that lives baseball. I don't have to take him to South Charleston and pay thirty-five dollars an hour for him to go buy it.
Yeah.
You know, and it's just, then that's why people wait, wait.
Well, our facility, I can tell you that our indoor facility, we've been taking care of the youth. We have, uh, for the last couple of years since we've had it installed, we've had, uh, we've invited any and all middle schoolers to come over in the evenings and condition and work out with our kids. And when they come there, we, uh, we give them the same, uh, the same instruction and workouts that we give our own kids.
And you want to schedule for that or anything?
We do this, we do it every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. We've been doing it on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday since October the twenty-seventh. We have a Facebook page.
Oh, do you?
Yes, we have a Lincoln County High School Facebook page, and, uh, we put announcements on there daily.
I mean, I think that it's a good idea to get the middle schools involved and make, you know.
And we've had, we had last winter, a year ago, we had a, uh, middle school, uh, baseball camp.
He came to that, and we never heard any more about it. But he did come to that, and it was great. You were talking with the tech, thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yeah, and then, uh, we just recently had a pitching clinic over there. It was maybe, um, about, uh, two months ago, a couple of months ago, where, um, uh, we had kids come in and, and, and we had Washington Tech's, uh, staff there and players there instructing and working with the kids also. And the facilities we've got now is, is open, is opening the doors for those kind of things. And I really believe that because of, uh, the, the, you know, those types of, of opportunities for the kids is, is one of the reasons why we feel real good about our prospects this year. We feel like that this is, uh, this is a year we're going to officially be a legitimate triple-A school. We, we really do that. And I'm not promising twenty wins because we play a tough schedule, but I, I do know that, know this much, that every time that we take the field, we'll have a chance. No doubt we'll have a chance. We feel real good about our chances, and, and we're like a fish in a fishbowl. You know, we've outgrown our fishbowl. We need, we need a bigger bowl so that we can grow.
Coach, uh, have you presented this to the Board of Education?
Yes, sir, I did, uh, Tuesday, Monday?
Tuesday. And what, what's their response?
Well, uh, I didn't ask them for the money for the lights. I was just, uh, giving them an update on our progress and the things that we've been doing over there. The board has helped me from, uh, you know, when I've asked, but I haven't asked for the big items from them because I just, quite honestly, didn't think I could get it, or I didn't think they had the money for it.
Because, you know, the way we have worked in passing, like we've asked the board to come up with a mountain, that's why. And they've done that, and, and I think because there's some other things you'll learn if you stick around tonight, that we are looking at in our budget now, which puts a lot of constraints on us as far as the diversity we can use the exposed for. And, you know, I would like, uh, just, just myself as commissioner, see what their response would be. And, you know, I'm not saying we couldn't come up with something, even if they didn't. But to me, you know, Board of Education's, you know, we've all set up Board of Education, so, and be mine a long time ago. But, you know, they receive a lot of money, you know, and, and being involved in the original, uh, school building authority, trying to get money from them back, and they're trying to go to high schools. You know, they basically said, no, no kind of athletic facilities, we don't, and this and that. But I think Commissioner Harless's point that if they're allowing other people to apply for those things with new schools and things like that, you know, I could still consider us a new school. And I think that we ought to look in, or the Board of Education ought to look into, uh, whether there's funding available for things like this because, as you will see later on in this meeting, uh, we have to make some really tough choices, you know? And, and as you know, we've always supported the kids and the programs we've had at the school, things like that. And I think your point's very well taken that the feeder system really has to be beefed up. You know, you have to have those kids interested. They have to have facilities also, and if they can use your facilities, I think that's great. But I do think that this is something that the board really needs to look at. Two things. One, what they can do personally, and the other thing is what they can get from the school building authority as far as funding the programs like this. Because, eh, I'm sure you want to have another phase after this phase, you know, and that's where we want it to be. We want to continue to improve. But I think what we ought to do is make sure that we know all the funding scenarios that we might be able to pull from this.
Sure.
But it, I would like to, you know, have them approached with and see if they say, well, we can do that, or we can't do that. And seeing as we brought this up about the school building authority, I don't know if that was discussed when you all funding, when you all made the presentation over there. No. And, and I think that's a, could be a very viable, uh, method of funding. A lot of it is not just that, some of the other things we're looking to do. And I think that, uh, that money should be available. At least we ought to look and see if we can make those monies available to us. I think, you know, it's, you know, when you see things progressing, you want to make sure they continue to progress. And, uh, because there's, our futures are with our kids, and, 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 uh, and we all, you know, in a position, we, we have to get these kids more physically involved in things, you know? Maybe not as much as you and I were at that point we went to school, but there, there needs to be physical activity in their lives. They have to know that's part of their lives. And, and we talk and get these, these healthcare providers, we talk to them all the time about the importance of doing that. But, you know, I've got people now that need to swim, you know, I mean, as far as their health problems and things like that, the older people and things like that. But there's no real thing they can do here around doing things like that, so. But I do think to, and your point made in your presentation about drugs and, and athletes is that they have to constantly perform at a, at a level far superior than what the everyday person does. And to do that, they have to be plenty. And, and I think that's why we see it. It gives them something to do, it gives them a structure to be under, and it also allows them to talk to others, the kids around them that aren't doing, it's, it's a group that they can make other people, by peer pressure, do better things for themselves, so. But I would like, just personally, I would like to know what the board's answer would be to those things. And, uh, that way we can better promote what we're doing. And I'm sure we, you know, if it goes for us, uh, the school building authority, you know, we give them all the support, we can do the political things that has to be done to let's people know how important it is to see us two months.
My little boy played on a travel ball team as well in Huron County. We had to go to Buffalo every game, or else, we did not have a field in this county that they could play on because no field had lights that they could play. I mean, it is a disgrace, it really is.
Well, you know, we're trying. We want to give our children something they can be proud of. And again, like I said, adequate is not what I'm about. I'm not, I'm not about being adequate, I want to be the best. And, uh, I can assure you that everything we've done over there has been top-notch, high-quality. Very, very best can be done, and we'll continue to do that. And, uh, we'll continue to try to make a place for our kids to be proud of. And we're proud of it, and, uh, we're going to continue to get better. I've got, I can tell you this, I've got some, you know, we have other things, we have other fish in the frying pan, but so to speak. I've got, um, you know, I'm looking for a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for turf. And, uh, I've got some, I've got some requests out there. But I've already asked a couple of different, uh, a couple of different organizations for that money. And I feel like, I honestly feel like I got a fifty-fifty shot at making it happen, really do.
I'll applaud you for all the work.
Well, I appreciate it.
I know you worked hard, and how much I learned from there.
Appreciate it. Anything that you guys can do to help us, we would certainly appreciate it. And we thank you for your time and consideration.
Greg, one thing that I want to be fair, is, uh, one thing we do, you know, we decide to help out, or whatever, we would have to change our, uh, contribution policy or something. And, um, one thing, we, we didn't, we didn't budget for this. I mean, any, you know, any request like this, we didn't, we didn't do our budget. You know, we're getting ready to do our budget that's coming here, and we have a lot of things on our plate right now with water projects and things that are going on. But, um, but I want to tell you, you know, I've been in your situation before, um, and it takes a lot of work to be a baseball coach, probably more than any, any other sport.
I have to agree with you on that.
And, uh, but you've done a long job.
Appreciate it.
And, uh, just, you know.
We're not done.
I understand that.
We're not done. We're not done. And, uh, we'll get there. We appreciate it. Is anybody, do you have any other questions? Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.